As part of the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, since the bike share program didn't make it tonight, maybe Larry would just tell us all about how bike share programs work in general. Maybe we can have our presentation as well. And we see line bikes out front.
Yeah, right. You all go try them out.
No, but this is not line bike. This is, I'd say my 32nd version of this is, the mayor of Helmsford was looking to get bikes onto that trailway there. That whatever, Button.
North County Trailway, yeah.
Button County Railroad or whatever. And so he started doing work on this, was right as line bikes were coming in, which he absolutely hates. He actually has them, his DPW picks them up after 24 hours and then the junkyard comes through. But, so.
What does he hate?
The line bikes and white planes. They're basically, their thing is, you can just leave them anywhere and there's like a GPS thing in them and they come, they come and find them to kind of locate them.
They find themselves home.
Yeah, exactly. So they come and pick them up, but they're supposed to pick them up within 24 hours. So he basically says someone, as soon as someone sees them, they have 24 hours or he takes them. He gives them back if they come in a certain amount of time, but it's just a different model. So this one actually had either a physical thing like city bike in the city. Or a virtual one where it's like a geopence kind of thing where you put it in, you return it there, but you can only put it in certain places, but. And these guys were in.
New Rochelle. New Rochelle, New Haven, and like the Jersey City or.
We saw that Village officials committed at the beginning. Seems whatever. It doesn't cost the village anything.
Except for.
Time and space.
Detritus.
Potentially.
And sidewalk congestion.
Yeah, depending where we put them. But we don't, we didn't agree to any number, so.
Everyone will write it down, but no one's going to.
All right, they're coming back to do some kind of visitation.
Yeah, we just have to reschedule with them. They, they were scheduled for December. We didn't have the December work session. I told them to get it on their calendar for January and it turns out they couldn't make it, so.
January is a big biking month.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know if the urgency is really there, but we'll, we'll get to them.
So review proposed local laws pertaining to downtown parking regulations.
We want to start. No, no, I mean.
No, I actually, oh, so.
Okay.
Okay.
No, you go first.
No, I was just going to say, I went, I went through the various laws and there's not really many. I talked to Larry about this, there's not a lot of items to discuss, you know? So it could actually, one would be about, well, well, one I think is very easy and that's the, the Ken Bernstein suggestion that on Main Street, that the two hour limit also be on Saturday.
Right.
Which I think makes sense.
Every day was on that.
Yeah, and holidays, because, yeah, when, when we were making those changes, we just made everything the same. So I think everybody's agreed that makes sense.
Right.
And then the other one I saw in that law, which I mean, everybody saw, is the, you know, the six, the six hour parking.
So that's what I've been thinking about quite a bit, which is, could I just riff on it for a second? Are you done with the other? Is there anything else that we?
No, it was, it was really just that, just the six hour.
Before we, may I just suggest, before we get off on six hours, because that will take us six hours. One of the things we had talked about at the end of the last session, if there is non-controversial aspects of this where it's pretty readily to be agreed to, perhaps we should clear that off the decks first and then obviously we need to talk about the six hours and you, you should riff away.
Well, the only other thing that I have besides the six hour one is one that's not parking related, but I think we seriously have to discuss and not lose track of the complaints about the speeding across North Buckout.
Those are two separate issues.
I know, but I just don't want to lose track of them because, you know, they keep being brought forward at the same time. That it's people, you know, either speeding to get a parking spot or speeding to get over to Bridge Street.
Mark, can I just say one thing to Olay Janus? Jan, I don't think, I think once this issue was resolved, the one other outstanding issue, which is the employee parking permits falls into place. So it's really pretty much all that's left.
Okay, so the rest of this is.
Said, part of the employee parking permits is a big issue for me. Whereas I don't think, I, on average, I think it's okay for a lot of the businesses, but I think, you know, you could go through and name a handful of businesses, all of which are either, you know, restaurants or like Jordains, which are not going to be serviced well by that limit, by limitation. Right. I mean, you go into Jordains, they have, you know, 10, 15 people working there.
It was a good, a good point.
Yeah, but I think it was in conjunction with some of the six hour discussion, so let, let's circle back to six hours.
Do the six hour.
Well, there is another related piece that I know, you know, you can solve all problems with this, but the idea that the DPW does alternate side and has X number of hours, you know, on all these local streets, like Wednesday from, I don't know, eight to 10, or, and, you know, there has been some discussion about that being shorter or being changed so that on certain days it's these and there aren't as many times when there is no parking because of alternate side. Now, that's, you know, that's a piece that if that were adjusted, it would ease some of the issues of the local people because they would have, they wouldn't have that as a burden as much.
I'd never have a window of.
Yes, they would have, yes.
Right.
So I'm just throwing that in as a related piece that would help ease.
And that's on, yeah, and that's still on my list, I know. I, just on that issue quickly, you know, the, the idea was, okay, if you, if you can do everything in an eight to 10 hour, eight to 10 o'clock window, potentially, if you look at the schedule, you can do some between eight and nine and some between nine and 10. I'd gone down that path, it was, met with some resistance.
Yeah, I'm sure it's not convenient.
Because it reduces flexibility, but I think, I understand the reason behind it, I understand, and, and look, is, is an hour the end of the world for a resident?
It helps.
It helps, it's, it's, it borders between, it helps a little bit and it's just a gesture, but it's something, you know, so I.
You guys talking about alternate side on the streets off of Main Street?
Yes, yes.
I think it definitely helps in the morning hour.
If you have to, yes, the difference between you have to get out by eight or you don't have to get out by nine from that side of the street, that eases, you know, some significant changes in your everyday.
But it's going to vary, it's going to vary.
And then other people would be.
Some people are eight to nine, some people are nine to 10.
Yeah, that helps.
It's going to help others, it's not going to help others.
Right, but.
It's a disadvantage, they're unfairly disadvantaged.
It could be.
Well, you get a little bit.
The one good thing though, and I mean, unless you disagree with this, I think you can deal with this issue independent of any of the other changes.
You can.
What's the status of alternate side now? What's the timeframe on those streets? Eight to 10.
Most than eight to 10.
Eight to 10.
So it's once a week on.
It just, it goes from side to side.
Right, it's like Wednesday, eight to 10.
The south and east, the, you know.
You know, I know it's a separate issue and it, and we can deal with it as a separate issue, but, but doesn't that only contribute to the backlog on Main Street? Are people trying to get up and down Main Street to go to school and to go to work? If, if eight to 10 is the time that they're doing alternate side pickups?
Not pickups.
Or cleaning or cleaning.
It's only the side streets.
It's only, but they're coming in and out of the streets, then?
Well, they're moving their car somewhere and they're usually trying to move it the night before. So that come eight in the morning, they're not stressed with having to, oh, it's eight o'clock, I got to get my car out.
I think Larry's got a good point, you know, we should be doing whatever possible to minimize X congestion generating activity on Main Street between seven and nine or seven.
Yeah, those are.
You know, because that's.
Jimmy, why can't they do the alternate side from 10 to 12?
I don't know.
I mean, it's going to require a change of schedule on it.
Oh, I understand.
Right, well, that's, that is a good point, right, because it doesn't matter what time they get to mine.
That's been asked for the last few years.
I mean, they, they do Jaffrey without, there's no like, we're cleaning the street on this day and you have to move. It's not like that. They just come around with their little thing and sometimes there's a car there and they go around it.
We don't have that much parking on the street.
Not, no, not.
No, but there's other, there's other streets.
Okay, well, anyway.
That's something we're going to look into, sure.
Not separate from the issue of parking.
It can be separate, is my point, you know what I mean, so.
I think, you know, there, there's a lot to gesture and making little bits better for people who are feeling pretty strained. So if this is a way to help it with a, a promise of adjusting it, I think it's a step in the right direction.
Can I just suggest one thing about that though, before you arbitrarily say 10 to 12? I think it's a matter of actually getting some community input about, is there a good time? If it turns out there is no good time, then that's, then what happens if people go, oh, no, that's the worst time in the world because blah, blah, blah.
I'm ready for work. I do it before I leave for work.
Yeah.
I think, I think mostly, I mean, you could, you can get a lot of opinions, but mostly it's, I have to move at night because the next morning, and that means you're, you're chunking into not many choices of where to put your car that night.
So you're trying to avoid moving a car before you actually move the car to go to work?
Right, you could.
Does that make sense?
Well, no, that you, yes, you'd have more flexibility. You wouldn't have to find a place at night.
Because you're going to be off.
Yeah.
And my question is, do they need to do it every week as well?
Yes, that's another.
First and third or whatever.
Irvington's pretty very close. Yeah, it, I mean, I'd have to look.
And I'm sure it's just a inconvenience of, you know, this way they have the option to do it.
Right.
Do they have regulations?
Yeah, there, there may be best practices that we have to follow with respect to the stormwater law, because this is. We actually log the number of.
Sure.
Miles and streets that are swept.
And I'm just not sure if they get to every street every Tuesday or whatever, you know, like, or if it's like.
On the side streets?
Yeah.
I'm fairly certain they do. Some of the outer lying ones, maybe not, but.
Yeah, so I, that's just a question on that. Like, I think we should write, before we change those laws, also have great command and control.
You know, it's not, right, that's really having.
We, we've had the conversations about not picking up garbage at, you know, 8:00 AM on Main Street as well.
Well, yeah, no, and that's.
And I know we've talked about that as well.
Being revisited as well.
Right, so, but, you know, I think it's all, that's all kind of a big, it's, it's puzzled, you know, you can't get everything done with less people. You know, otherwise we're not going to be able to do this, or, you know, so I think that's the other side of the coin, is this kind of their scheduling as well as helping out the residents. It's also DPW.
Yes, I always knew it was a DPW issue on, you know, if we can't do this because that's the time the trucks go to the, you know, Charles Point or, you know, there could be a lot of constraints that I don't know about, but.
Right, we can talk through.
So we need to hear from them.
Yes, we need to hear from them.
And if it helps, because if there's a compelling reason, we need to, we need to know.
Sure. Then I think we need to talk to some residents, just whether formally or informally before it's proposed. We can find out what windows DPW is okay with and then figure out what's.
And then see what.
What windows makes the most people happy, the least people angry.
You pay by choice.
It could be, you know, it could be, it changed nothing. I've just, you know, I've always thought that if they had fewer hours when they're just sitting there with, you know, this, this whole side is all cleared and nothing is happening. It's a little frustrating.
There might be a way to make it, you know, do that with, and it's just as efficient for the DPW, you know, so I think we can more info on that one.
Or have little signs that turn, for rent to green. Like the FedEx pickup?
With.
Yeah, I love it, right.
They turn on the sign.
Yeah.
I like when the city, they get into their spot, the minute they.
Oh, as soon as the truck was by, yeah, sure.
Well, you know, there is an app though where you can look at this parking signs in the city streets. I love it.
Well, that's because you can't figure them out otherwise.
That's right, this is to tell if you're going, what you, what the alternate side times are if you're driving it.
Well, given the signage on the side streets, I mean, we've had people, I think even Walter Montgomery once talked about this. There was no way you could read the signs and come in to argue your point because this sign said this, this sign said that, this one wasn't readable, and then you got a ticket for, oh, whoops. So it's, you know, the signage thing is an integral part to all of this parking thing working.
We need an Irvington parking app that tells you, what they say on your GPS, can you park here or not now?
It could be one.
It's better bringing me Larry's voice.
Yeah. Hi, this is Larry. You're good to park.
Or where they can locate the nearest legal parking space for you.
But in all seriousness, depending on how you make the.
Oh, I was serious.
No, right, but you could, you could range from being very easy to understand to being very complicated, so.
Those are easy for you.
Well, yeah, but we're, we're trying to, easy so far as well, so. So at least on the six hour parking. Should we consider a parking app? I mean, is that totally outside the realm of, but I'm sure you could get one for. I don't know.
I know, nobody, nobody wants to have to pay, but this is, I was just in, in Tarrytown today on something else and Park with Pay by Phone, this is their whole app on how to, you know, pay without having to, you know, add duration.
That's, that's the service that we use. Yeah, we have that at the Artsley Station.
The Artsley train station, but.
You want to put meters out there, we've had, we have the solution. Right, so I always, that, that brings me directly to the six hour thing. Okay. By the way, I don't think we should forget about an app totally because we may, it might actually have other benefits at some point, but there's some local developers that would probably do it cheaply. Okay, I mean, let's, let's see how the regulations work out because they may not make it complicated, I don't know. The six hour thing is, you know, there's competing purposes and there's a lot of talk about it being, you know, plumbed up by non-residents who are coming over from the, across the river or from Tarrytown and, you know, over, over and playing the odds about getting a ticket. So the first thing to start with anything is, I really do agree with the notion that we, we got to have strict enforcement. I mean, before we do almost anything, we should really have enforcement working because it may turn out that a lot of our parking problems, not all of them, but there's a certain amount of availability problems may actually clear up once people stop playing the game. So it seems like we have someone dedicated to do it, but they can't do it given the mechanism they have now, which is the chalk. You've got a cute little car to drive around in and a chalk thing that slows everything down, so I do think that it's really important to, you know, it's probably above and beyond anything else, if we do parking change and don't try to make enforcement work, then I think we're just fooling ourselves.
I, I do think we should look at the less player thing.
I totally agree and I think.
I think we have talked about it.
Allows you to drive through and just do a sweep of every street that's of concern.
It's going to be much better for the traffic enforcement person also, because you can just basically keep driving around and, you know.
Can I throw something out there?
And that would eliminate the people who are taking the six hour spots with every intention of being gone for eight, 10 hours.
Exactly, exactly.
It would discourage the people using it in lieu of getting a parking permit.
I, I, this is an important discussion, very important, but I had thought that the idea was to make the signage clear, make it clear to everybody what the rules were. I mean, I just told you an example of how the, the signage can be so confusing that you could think you're doing the right thing and you're not. So enforcement, I thought, was going to follow the changes.
I agree.
Rather than come before it, for that reason.
No, absolutely.
But, but, but they both have to happen.
Yes.
I understand they should have to say, not be delayed by six months.
Right, I've, I've had these conversations in exactly these terms, whether it's technology that deals with it or whether it's manpower that deals with it, it's going to get dealt with, you know what I mean? It's, it's what's happened, at least on a smaller scale, it's what's happened at the lower part of Main Street where the parking officer may not have been getting there as frequently, it's being dealt with, with other manpower in other ways.
Now.
If there's, yes, if there's ways of making that more efficient through technology, then we'll certainly do that, but I don't think the two are mutually exclusive, so.
Can I throw something out that I mentioned to Larry today, and I don't know if it helps resolve any of it, is what about if for the six hour parking, you metered it?
That's what my suggestion was going to be. You pay for six hour parking, you've got numbered slots, but.
It might discourage people from coming down from Tarrytown, or if they are, they're paying for it. Or even somebody coming from another part of parking.
There's only one thing that you got to do, which is not allow it to be extended.
And you can do that on the apps. You can, you can, you can say, you try to do it and you can't.
Well, what about this? What about, I like this idea, what about if it's a six hour spot, the only way to get it is to pay for six hours?
That's, ooh, that's tough.
So then somebody who just wants to park for an hour, they can, but they have to be paid.
So it's a $6 slot or whatever. Well, but it's, yeah, I mean, we, we kind of, we kind of have a fee structure that mimics that a little bit over in Artsley. I, I forgot the exact dollars, but let's just say that it's, you know, a dollar an hour up to $7 maximum, which basically means that anyone that's parking there for the train pays a maximum, and pays the maximum. But if they are only going to park there for two hours, they, they do only have to pay two, so it's not quite what you were saying, but.
Yeah, no, I'm saying the opposite.
The opposite, yeah.
If we're trying to, the big issue.
Can a resident park in that spot with a resident?
Well, I think we, we would.
Sticker and not pay any money to me.
Yeah, I think that's what the assumption would be.
It's now, you know.
See, that would go a long way to mitigating, but the thing is that I do think that you don't want it to be so cheap. I'm just taking off on the Artsley Station. You don't want to be so cheap that it becomes an alternative to actually.
Getting it.
Uh, getting a sticker or.
There wouldn't be a problem.
So in other words, it's not, $7 gives you infinite stay. It's like $6 is the limit, six hours is the limit after that, the ticket guy's coming.
Can it even, does it, does a person actually have to come to give you a ticket or does the system say?
Yes, they do, yeah.
Somebody has to come. It doesn't register, hey, there's still a car there.
They can tell you, they can alert the person that I still have to come and give you the ticket.
Okay, on the car.
They can have a list of where to go.
No, be enforced, yeah.
Oh, so they have to do it now.
White planes, they actually get a pop-up, so the guy driving around says, oh, there's three violations on Maple Street.
Potential violation.
Oh, okay, oh, that's good.
The part, the spot could have been emptied. Yeah, no, no, you drive, you drive by, the spot is empty, there's no violation.
Right.
That's the way we enforce it now. Be able to give, okay, but I don't have a resident parking permit, so if I needed to park really quickly to go to Dr. Wyler, let's say his parking lot is full. Right, but I think we have to talk about, we have to talk about the scheme on how we distribute the six hour parking. That's all part of this discussion. I think it was suggested, you know, it suggested it with maybe Brian, and somehow it came up.
I suggested to Brian.
Right, and the suggestion was have a scheme that distributes the six hour parking evenly across all of the side streets, so.
Used to cross the top, you know, bottom five percent.
I think it's everywhere. Well, it could be, it could be everywhere, so, so.
West side of the street.
Well, let's just, I mean, that's what we're talking about, so, so let's just say for argument's sake, the west side of the street of any of the streets, the west side is six hour and the east side is two hour. Right? So the west side, the six hour parking is subject to meters. If, if you did the six hour parking, would that eliminate, I'm just thinking, how, would that move you toward being able to eliminate employee parking passes? Yeah, yes. Even though they'd have to, they'd have to move, right? They don't, they need, they were working.
After six hours, they move once.
But they are now. We don't know worse off than they are now. See, I like that idea a lot better because I think the problem is we're really working against a number of businesses.
And Larry, when you explained it to me today, I thought that was really helpful.
So in terms of the.
Well, you had the employer parking program. You came up with that because of the elimination of the six hour spaces.
Well, yeah, right, so that's how the two interact, so the, so because you're eliminating the six, which is where the employees are parking right now, if you eliminate all of it, then you need to provide them some relief, which was the employer parking.
So you're suggesting not eliminating the six hours?
I'm suggesting, well, what was, what was suggested is half and half. Essentially.
Pretty much what there is now.
Right, that was my question. My question is.
No.
We're still going to have less six hour spots.
Yes.
But, but how many six hour spots will we, in other words, I, you know, I have two comments about it. One is, I would love to try to do this without meters.
Okay.
And two, I, I would like to know how many six hour spots we'll have within a reasonable walking distance for, for the people who need to be day trippers.
Right.
Because those people have in some way are being penalized by us taking away half of the six hour spots on two over streets.
Very much so. Well, not very much so, because if they get, get redistributed to the next two streets, that's the same number of six hour spots in four streets as we have.
Well, and you still have. Two streets, which.
You still have the wild card of the lower part of Main Street itself has six hour parking, so the bottom.
Two blocks.
The bottom two blocks.
Right.
Which wouldn't change.
That won't change.
Doesn't have to change. So the only thing you're taking away is half of the side streets. Yeah, how about more six hour parking on Aster? Now, you've got those three or four.
Those, we talked about this, a little bit, those ones right against the train.
Right, those are definitely, in my opinion, should definitely be six hours.
Those are like the obvious six hour ones. They have four or six.
But still stay two hours.
Yeah, they used to be because there was like four or five businesses across from.
But that's not the case anymore, right?
Right. Yeah, there's a condo and there's.
So can we put that as low hanging fruit?
Well, some of those could be.
It's about more spots, I think.
Maybe we want to save those spots for Matheson Park spots, because we do right now have only six Matheson Park two hour spots. And if we're really talking about making major improvements and trying to encourage families to come and use Matheson Park that are not just within a walking distance.
I thought of that, but I thought the little side, the, for, for having a stroller or something, it's a lot better to have a two hour spot on the little extension of North Buckout that turns around. I guess it's already called.
Where it meets Aster, yeah, where they are now.
That's what we have.
Yeah, but it's only the six.
Have those.
Yeah, six there.
What about if that whole dog leg became two hours?
So there are six there, but there are.
Six less six hour spots. You know, let's say that with, that whole dog leg is six, six hours and six two hours. If we make them all two hours, we now have 12 two hours, which is good, but that's six less.
But then you're going to pick up three down by.
Right.
The station.
So you pick up three and.
And what about the, the ones right in front of the parking lot? Are those, I'll make you park.
Those are two also.
The Aster parking lot.
The ones not, not on the Aster, you have the Aster.
In front of the Burnham Building parking lot?
No, 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 on the north, north Aster. There's like, yeah, there's a couple spots there.
Oh, right, on the street itself.
Not really in front of those.
Right, right.
Stores.
Yeah, those, those, I don't think those are six.
I think they're either one or two.
Yeah.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to recoup and move for.
The six hours closer to the station to allow the two hours to be off the hill nearer to the park. I mean, I think that's what you could try to do.
And this, the, the, the far side of the station, that, that you had mentioned, that that's Metro North parking that, that meters. Do people actually, they look so broken down. I'm not sure people even do it.
Look, they come around.
You can't do that.
They do it by their app.
Or they do, they pay on the other side.
Or they come over.
Right, the west, so going down the hill, it's only the west side of Bridge Street coming down from Matheson Park. So the west side of that street are metered spaces that are controlled by Metro North.
And then even the turn.
And it was on the east.
By the extent, when you turn onto going straight towards the river, there are a few more.
Yes, that's right, on west Main Street, yes.
West Main, right, so you come down and there are a bunch here and then you go like this and there are.
Irvington owned, Metro North managed metered spaces that we share revenue on. All the ones in front of.
And you pay for it on your app or you go across to the machine on the other side?
But I think.
Does it make sense to try to take them back?
Yeah, I think they would be more than open to have them come back. The problem is, is that those are full.
Every day.
18 hour commuter spaces.
Ah, so free, right, right.
That's why they have the control over them to begin with, because they were, they were part of, going back in the history of this, those spaces were actually on-street permitted spaces by the village.
Okay.
We, we used to have permit parking when we controlled the Metro North parking lot and that was part of the, the complex of parking where people could park. When Metro North came in and took back their main lot, they, we talked about, well, you know, we can't have multiple permit systems here, so we gave them, not gave them, they managed the Aster Street Lot on the corner with the same type of term, permit, and we said, well, manage these spaces on the street, and they said, wait a minute, they're on the street, you can't have permits, right? Which they're right. So they basically forced them to be converted to metered spaces, which you can have on a street and, but we didn't want to ever take them away from the commuter, not the day tripper, but the commuter parking complex, the inventory.
So those people don't have permits. They just race to get down there early.
They're metered, long, long-term meters, which.
Just like we have in Artsley. We have the same, we have the same.
How filled do they, how early do they fill?
And they're filled every day.
As are the ones in, in the, in Artsley and also the ones in the Metro North.
But can, but you can buy a shorter amount of time with them, right? You can buy six hours or, you know, you don't have to buy a long, long time.
Yeah, but it's...
So, if you can find one, you can just...
They're gonna be filled. They're gonna be filled. They're right next to the station. They're gonna be filled.
Yeah, they're usually filled right away.
So, leave, forget what I said. We should leave those where they are.
So, we need those for long time.
I mean, we could, in the whole scheme of things, we could take over the management of them. I think they know, in a heartbeat, they would let us manage those on-street spaces, which would give us the full revenue, but we'd be responsible for the parking meter and whatever else we're gonna implement there. And now you have two separate meter systems, because there's meters in the Metro North Lot, and now you have this meter, so...
Never mind.
But still and all, even if you did take back the management of it, you then would have to make the decision of, do you want these to be full commuter spaces, or do you want them to be six-hour or two-hour? That's a hard decision to make, to take that out of the inventory of your, of your commuters.
Yeah, I, I...
I'm just saying, it's, it's not so easy.
I think we're talking about taking that stuff out of it.
No, no, well, it was raised as a question, that's all.
I raised it as a question, withdrawing it because I don't think...
Right, right.
Well, I wanna get back to what Larry was saying. So, if, if you, and I, I agree that two hours near Matheson are important. So, when you're on that little extension of North Buckout that's actually called what? It's called a whatever, that block.
Dogleg.
That the angle's on. Right now, how many of them are two hours?
Six.
Six.
Six, and how many of them are there altogether?
I don't know. My guess is at least another six before you make the turn.
Yeah, it's probably maybe even a few more.
Could be a few more, could be eight.
So, what, what about the possibility of making all of those two hours for, for the park, because that's much better for strollers than going down by...
Right, but we're trying to, but we're trying to pick up...
So, we take the, the ones by the train station, make them six, but take those ones on the turnway.
And make them two.
And the ones next to the north Aster parking lot in front, those two that are...
And then six.
Make them six, too.
Yes.
We're trying to make it even, even.
So, and then we're putting the six hours closer to the train. We're putting the two hours closer to the parking.
Somebody has to...
And it's a lot easier to push the stroller from there than to go up and get across.
The ones like the west side. There are a couple that go up the hill there, you know, across from Bazaar.
Yes, in that, the east side of Aster. In front of that, that block of...
East side, right.
Right against River House.
We raised the twenty-two dollar Aster.
There's about five or six spots.
Right, yeah.
Those are two-hour spots.
I think so, two hours.
Or one hour.
Well, some of those could become six-hour spots, too.
No.
I think, I think how many businesses we have down there, so that's the question. I think there's a hairdresser there, is that it?
There's not much else.
There's not much going on here. I mean, Christie isn't there anymore. And, you know, there are those parts that are bizarre, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say she's, you know, it's not like she has to let anybody else park there, but she does, basically. You know, those are her bizarre spots. There are quite a few of them.
There's a lot.
Yeah, a lot.
They're, they're the ones off-street in the...
Yes, yes, they are her spots. There are, there are her spots. I'm just saying, good practice.
Are those...
Those are not spots anymore. They've been blacked out. They're, they're, the, their, their property line, based on the survey, their property line went through about halfway into the parking spaces that used to be marked there. So, technically speaking, we weren't supposed to have those spaces there, or if we did, they're supposed to be out in the road more, which is impractical.
So, they're not...
So, we took them out.
Marked spaces in front directly?
I believe they've been blacked out.
Well, they have, they have, they have fifteen-minute bizarre, only marking spots, or whatever.
Whatever it was that was village parking is, shouldn't have been village parking there.
But, but is it bizarre parking? There's, there's three spots directly in front of Bazaar.
Well, that's the ones you started.
That are parallel spots, not, not pulling.
I thought they got blacked out.
And those spots are bizarre spots.
Because it's half of their property.
It's half of their property.
Yeah, but the other half is, uh, village parking, so it seems a little bit...
Yeah, but it, but it doesn't, it doesn't really, I think, if people parked there, it's not like they enforced bizarre only there. Because bizarre has the giant handicap spot as well, and like, there's two spots after that in the, right in front of the station, and then they have the whole thing going on.
Exactly.
Right, they have lots of spots.
Three spots, I think they have like...
I think there's only, they only have three in the, in the ones, because there's a giant handicap spot, which is, I guess, if you have an aircraft carrier.
But isn't one of those van accessible, you know, when you're... I think that's the purpose of it, so that's important.
That's the way they're supposed to...
But I think we've got a good idea. I mean, I think this is a good idea in, to split the spots between six hours and two hours. Better shuffle, thirteen-hour, eight-block, or we done at the north Aster, the north of that lane.
Well, I mean, I think in principle, with the idea of taking each of the side streets and, and splitting it between six and two.
Right.
And then picking up particular spots for particular needs, like Matheson Park, and, and like being a little bit closer for conversion. Six-hour spots close to the station.
Who parks in the village employee only spots next to the library?
DPW.
Mostly DPW.
It's DPW, yeah.
We did discuss those in this one iteration of our discussions about whether or not, and then at a certain point during the afternoon, are they not needed. They're needed early in the morning.
Until three o'clock, or approximately.
So, three o'clock, can they start being six-hour spots at three, four, five?
Yeah, but nothing's gonna be in...
I mean, then you get...
Well, no, but nothing's enforced after six o'clock anyway, so they're...
So, then you have, but you could be more than two hours in those spots if they are opened up, and you could be a person leaving at three for the train and coming back at eight.
Right, so if it says no parking until three P.M., and you're going to a show, you're fine.
You can just...
Or you can make it four o'clock, whatever time they're at there.
Um, and then there's also, I mean, this is minor, but there's, there's the, the ones that are marked fifteen minutes in front of the library that, when the library isn't open, I think it needs to be clear that they're no longer fifteen-minute spots, because the library isn't open. You can park there longer. Somebody brought that up.
Why is, why is it two-hour parking if the library's not open?
Right.
It doesn't make sense, none of that.
Why is, yeah, and why is fifteen minutes when the library isn't open?
But no, but you're, you're, you're both right. Your issue is that there shouldn't be time restrictions when the library is not open.
And you could say there are library programs, but once it's...
Right, but the library is open...
Two nights a week.
No, I know that, but it, but after, after, uh, six o'clock, none of it's enforced anyway.
But the fifteen-minute is. I mean, people don't understand that that's not, it's, it's okay to park there, when it says only fifteen minutes. That seemed to be the...
Yeah, but no one takes that seriously.
No, but...
The lady who came there, she said, nobody can park there, because it says fifteen minutes.
Yeah, I think, I didn't, I don't think she was understanding the relationship.
No, because I actually drove past to look at those signs. It says fifteen minutes only.
Yeah, but it's pretty clear that it was...
There's fifteen-minute signs on Main Street, but...
Right, her, her issue was overnight parking. Her issue wasn't, you know, I wanna be able to park from six to ten in order to go on the train. Her issue was overnight parking, because she has a building and she has tenants on Aster Street, so... And she was making the leap that because it said fifteen minutes or two hours, that no one could park there overnight. Well, every other side street says two-hour parking or six-hour parking, and they can park overnight. It's, it's no different down there. She, I think she was...
But there's a sign after being a work on what side.
Then, it's...
You know?
No, I, I, I don't, I don't think so, and then...
But it has to say that it's allowed from three to six or something, because I actually gotta...
I really think so. I mean, I think it's important that it can...
You mean the DPW spots?
Oh, that's different, yes, the DPW, I agree with you.
DPW parked is one, that, that...
Because right now, it just says employee parking, so...
That, that frees up some, and I...
No, does it say two-hour parking, um, eight A.M. to six P.M.? Or does it just say two-hour?
Yes.
It says two-hour. It says two-hour parking.
Well, I don't know, in front of the library itself, or in general, no, it has the times. It has the times.
Well, so, then, if it's not after that, then...
Now, look, whether those signs down there have the time, I have no idea.
Right, but it doesn't...
Because, you know, the way things were done, I have no idea, but generally speaking...
It's so unclear in so many places that nobody...
That's what it says.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Says...
Well, that's pretty clear. I mean, it could be that there's one or another sign that isn't clear.
Oh, it probably is.
Fifteen-minute parking, and maybe you would wanna add that on to it, but if there's...
Well, the one right outside here in front of, uh, in front of the electronics store, right, and the hardware store, says fifteen-minute only, there's no restrict, there's no further restriction.
Yeah.
Right, so that's not clear either, really, if you, but, I mean, there are two nights a week when that fifteen minutes would count, because the library is open.
It does say fifteen minutes.
It says seven to nine, and they're saying, well, some nights or whatever. Look, I mean...
Oh.
After six o'clock, everyone does.
Well, then you have such a complicated sign.
Who's going to vote, see, like, three hours?
The lights are on, you can't park there.
It had to be, uh, walk-in library, if the door's open.
Parking we want, and then we have to decide if the, the signs are really misleading. That's a big thing to change the signs. Certainly, though, we can inform people what the regulations are, in the context of saying what the changes are. We can clarify that, even if it takes us wanting to get, well, new signs.
I think the, uh, the assumption is we are gonna change the signs.
I'm sorry?
The signs are gonna have to be changed.
Yes, I think we are gonna change.
We're gonna change the signs, but we, but we can clarify what some of these...
Yeah, but...
Six-hours one, these are all the time. Because I, it was, it was like most of the, I don't know, I've never had, I've never had trouble going to the library and parking, ever.
But I, but I think...
Yeah, sometimes, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, during the day when there's, there's...
When there's a, when there's a kids' program going on?
Mm-hmm.
Right. But anyway, oh...
But, but I think, I, I think that saying, okay, what, what you're suggesting is that we have the signs, allow parking Monday, Wednesday, and Friday after five, and the other days not until after nine, right? For that, for that amount, for that, yeah, for that amount of complexity, in my opinion, the availability of parking down there at five o'clock or six o'clock becomes, it doesn't matter, because people are starting to clear out of the Metro North Lot, for God's sakes.
Well, remember, when you put on a sign, the hardware just doesn't understand.
Right, right.
So, I think what you're, what you're picking up is not terribly useful, because there's, there's gonna be parking.
As long as, as long as they know that the overnight, that the fifteen minutes doesn't count.
Every sign in the village says two-hour parking, six-hour parking, Monday through Friday, seven, eight A.M. to whatever it's gonna say, that means there's no restrictions any other time.
Although, that wasn't always true, because that's how I got that overnight per, perfect, because it, it, because they actually said we didn't wanna have, they said sign, uh, there's too many signs, so it has to be posted that you are allowed to park overnight, which is, there's still some on, like, you know, parking allowed three, six.
Right, so the way that was, the way it was implemented is that when you enter the village, there's a sign that says no parking allowed more than one hour between the hours of three A.M. and six A.M. on any street except where posted.
Exactly, right.
But that posts great.
And then you post what it is, and, right, so, so now the sign at the entrance to the village is gonna, you know, whatever, I don't know what it's gonna say.
Except, except, very careful.
Well, I like, I like back to that idea of the, the idea of alternate, on, on, on both sides, one side is two-hour, one side is six-hour.
We go through it street by street, because some streets only have parking on one side. This is where it says two-hour parking. Okay, Main Street's not gonna change. Main Street will still be two-hour parking. Right now, it says two-hour parking on...
Okay, just...
The very first, very first, well, it's, it's numbered differently for theirs.
Strollers.
It, because that was, it's now four, it's now four.
Well, I'm crooked, please, that's...
You have a page for it?
Yeah, let's just, yeah.
It's right after the agenda, right after the agenda.
Right after the agenda, it's right there.
Oh, okay, got it.
Okay, so, north and south Aster streets. Oh, that's complicated, right?
Yeah, we know it's complicated.
Blows north Aster, the north Buckout altogether. Oh, no, Aster.
No, north and, north and south Aster have some spots that are gonna be marked six hours.
Okay, those are the ones we just talked about.
We talked about that are facing directly toward the tracks.
And wherever, because we wanna pick, and the ones across...
So, pretty much all the ones on Aster are gonna be six-hour?
Except where marked.
Okay.
The ones up by the, the...
Library.
By the library.
Well, no, and no one...
Aster, the ones up by...
By the businesses.
Right.
Right.
And some of those are...
And south Aster in front of the library.
Right.
But where, where would a two-hour on north Aster?
So, here, like, where, like, where Loretta's main station is. These are still retail things, these parts, these spots here, I guess.
On that side of the street, but once you get down, well, over here...
See, if you look here, there's not that many. There's only one, two, three, four, five, and then, because this is bizarre, and this is bizarre.
All right, so it's one, two, three, four, five.
Five, six, maybe that's a six or seven, so it's...
Dumpster isn't there.
But you're just saying over here, there are...
And full of spaces on one.
Yeah, that one could be six, I guess. It's only, it's one here, one...
So, you think all of them are two hours?
I don't know, I don't know any of them.
I'm not sure.
I think it's, I'd say, see how many, I don't know if, I don't know what's in this building.
I mean, Loretta still operates as a... Really?
Yep, she celebrated her twenty-fifth anniversary or whatever.
And then what other retailer goes on there?
These two had businesses in...
They're businesses, but they're like hallways or something?
No, no, they, these were like, one of them was like an architecture firm. So, so practically, we can't just do east side six-hour and west side...
Well, it's so strange.
Most of the...
I was just saying...
Alternate side, though.
What?
Because, because then if you have alternate sides, you've got one entire area that's not allowed to park on...
Well, the alternate side...
Right, if you're doing alternate side, that kind of blows your six-hour, two-hour balance, doesn't it?
Except when there's alternate side, then it's not...
But balance is being blown now, so I, I mean, it's part of, part of your lack of inventory. It's part of your lack of inventory already.
We have a parking garage.
Okay, so, north Aster is all specialized, north and south Aster, but I think you know what they are, right?
Well, no, well, no, I, I need to be clear about it, because you're going back to...
Okay, well, I, I, I just...
What?
Right, can I say it again?
Can you describe it, Brian?
Yeah.
We just looked at the six-hour spaces.
On the west side...
These are si, these are six?
These are six, on the west side.
Of north or south Aster?
North Aster, let's start north Aster.
Okay. It's easier to exclude what is a six.
So, the spaces that are directly in front of the train station, that are...
If, if there are spaces there.
That are not, that are not the bizarre spaces, because there's the big bizarre handicap.
Oh, so one to, just to the south of the station?
Right, like, there's like four perpendicular spaces, one, two, nine, thirty-four.
They would actually be all of them. They would all be, they would be all the public spots that are on the west side of north Aster.
And then there's, then there's kind of two, like, standalone spots, which are...
Are you still on the west side?
Yes. No, no, I'm on, I moved over to the east side.
Okay.
There's two, there's two standalone spots.
East side of Zohar Aster.
Yep.
In front of the...
In front, parking spot, yeah, so there's like one spot here, and one spot here, I think that could probably be six.
Probably the parking lot, right.
But you decided the entrance. Exactly, and either side of the entrance.
One's a parallel spot and one's a perpendicular spot.
And then, depending on how much is still needed for two-hour, like, how vibrant that retail district is down there, maybe we could even quickly ask...
Going up the hill.
Going up the hills, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, uh, parallel spots, perpendicular spots.
In front of River House.
And then there's two perpendiculars. And then there's two perpendiculars.
But that's, so that needs a little research to try to figure that out.
That should be two or six, if it could all be six, fantastic, but.
They're probably, it's probably, realistically, half and half, but.
Yeah, maybe those two could be six, and these are all two.
All right.
Maybe the.
Well, we can, I can look at that, that's not.
Yeah, the parallels may be, as I suggested, the parallels are six and the perpendiculars are, are two.
Okay. I don't know what you're talking about.
Right, probably like Loretta's main station there.
Yeah.
So like, that's one, two, three, four, five, six.
The parallels are six and the perpendiculars are two.
Yes, yeah.
All right, so I know what has to happen there. I mean, you know, you have to make a decision.
But what about?
Why don't you come around Buckout for Buckout?
We didn't get that far, we're still on, now we're getting around, what is, what is South Astor?
Okay, South Astor.
All right, South Astor doesn't have many spots, but.
Um, you have the spots that are directly from the library parking, what we're going to do with those.
The P P W spots now, that we're saying after three.
Employee.
Employee spots.
Yeah, those, those can be, we'll figure out how to, I don't even know if they're in the law that way, I have no idea.
The signage that, that after the, they, after their day's over, they're become.
We just put the signs up, I'm sure.
Yeah.
So we'll just change the sign. So employee parking to three PM.
Yeah.
How many spaces are there?
Likely to move at park.
So does that mean after three PM it's unlimited?
Will they move at three, or is it?
Because it's basically after six.
They don't live there.
Are there other spaces on South Astor, the others will be where it's?
There's all, there's all the ones in front of the library.
Okay.
Right, which are somewhat divided right now, but some of them are shorter and some of them.
Okay, they're either two or fifteen minutes, right?
There are two hours, yeah.
Two, and there's one fifteen minute or two fifteen?
There are two fifteen minutes, I think, and then the others are two. And they are all perpendicular.
Right.
Perpendicular.
And, and, and I would agree that they get used by the library.
Oh, they do, yeah.
Yeah, no, we're not trying to take.
But, but I think that we want to take them.
All right, South Buckout Street A and X.
South Buckout Street.
Add it?
It's no, that's no change. That, that's the, that's the little spur street.
What do you mean no change? Because there are no, there are no on-street spots there.
There are, that little jog thing. And are those the ones in front of Gosu?
No.
Is that what you know the one?
They're, they're in front of the houses. What happened to Station Road from, uh.
Oh, oh, oh.
The proposed parking lot.
Yeah.
Across from the what?
The proposed parking lot for Astor Buck.
Okay.
You know that little side spur? So that's two hour, it should stay, whatever it is.
Stay two hours?
It is.
Whatever it is currently, it should stay, right? It's two.
Okay, so North and South.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
North and South Doucher.
We didn't get to the rest of Buckout.
We're just, we're just.
I'm, I'm working on this.
Oh, you're going here, oh, okay.
But, yeah, you're right, you could, it should probably, oh, God. Yeah, because these don't have continent or, or, or Buckout, okay. But we should also, okay, South Buckout from Main Street to Station Road. It's not on there, but it's on the six hour, because some of those are on the six hour.
I think those are all six hour, now is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, and that, I, I wouldn't, that, sorry, so South Buckout, I, I would not at all recommend changing any of those from six to two. Because you have, there you have a dynamic of not just being close to the train station, but being close to the Astor Buck.
So those are all six hour.
So if there's, if there's a balance there that works, I would.
And they have, and they do have a lot of driveways and garages.
And no one's complaining about South Buckout.
Right.
Randall Shepherd.
Okay, um, what about, what about North Buckout?
Randall, oh, I'm thinking of, no.
That's, that's the big, that's the big question.
Oh, okay, yeah, but I actually.
Yeah, well, they, they, they were.
North Buckout.
They, they were very adamant that they didn't wanna be singled out.
Okay, so we make one side six hour, one side two.
You have to assist it with the others and then.
Well, but we've also got the, the post office parking that changes.
Which will stay, well, but that'll, if there's spaces that are marked short term, those would stay short term. In other words, if, if there are signs out that say fifteen minutes or whatever.
That should be that side then, for the shorter ones.
For the two hours, yeah.
That's on your west side.
You're right.
Two hour one side on the west side, six hour.
So we're thinking those should be six hours, and the other ones two hours.
And then, and we could theoretically carry that all the way out.
It just, ad hoc, I have been driving down Buckout a couple of times a week at different times. I've never.
But they were part of.
I've never, I've never not found a parking space.
This on Buckout beside you is.
Except right in front of the post office.
Now, immediately, I don't go in five, six o'clock.
Yeah, so the people coming home and the people leaving in the morning and.
But, but during the day, all times of day, there's parking on Buckout.
Okay, so on north, on north continent and south continent.
Well, wait, but we're gonna talk about North Buckout extension, or whatever you wanna call it.
You left out the Bridge Street east of intersection.
Okay, I'm gonna start, I'm just walking from here to this, okay?
Oh, okay, I'm looking at this one.
Well, no, but we, we can't.
But there's also a six hour list.
There's a six hour list, there's.
Okay, whatever works for you is fine.
I'm sorry, Larry, which way are we talking about?
He, he's talking about Br- Bridge Street on, on.
The south side of Bridge Street east of North Astor?
East of the intersection with North Astor, yes, I think that's what you.
I'm sorry, I wanna repoint.
There's the north side of Bridge Street from its intersection with North Astor.
I guess it's called Bridge Street.
Yes, well, and here it is, so, but, but then it's also this.
Google disagrees.
What does it call it?
Google.
Yeah, I think we have a problem.
Yeah, it's all right, we don't care. We don't care.
It's obviously signed, correct, yeah.
All right, so, um, so the Bridge Street extension, whatever you wanna call it.
Yes.
That will be all two hour on the north side of that street?
That's what I'm thinking, on that one.
It's a lot.
It's a lot of spots.
Too many?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. Well, there's fourteen, but you said there's four or six now.
There was six that are dedicated as two, as two hour spots.
So that's, it seems like.
Eighty-five, eighty-five feet is what's in the code, so that's, whatever.
Eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, it looks like, it looks like, so there's not, yeah, it might be fifteen spots, so.
I'm sorry, where are we?
We're on the little corner after.
We come around, after the post office, we come around.
Oh, when you come around that.
Yeah.
So we're making them all two hour?
Well, that's what we're talking about.
Are you missing?
That's a lot of spots. That's a lot of.
Have to sit and gate, uh.
The Matheson spots, I'm including in the fifteen, so if there's six, then there's nine.
The gate into the private.
No, no.
Nope, this is for that, yeah. And then there's, there's another, what, three or four on, on the south side, too.
Which were gonna be six hour.
So some of them are six hour now, and then they become two hour?
Yes, the closest six to Matheson Park.
Are two.
Are two.
Yep.
I think they might all be on the other side of the, of the gate to the Rogers House.
Which other side, meaning the, the less.
On the Matheson Park side of, 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 of the entrance to, to.
No.
That's where they should be.
There's no, there's no spaces over there. No, there's no spaces, there's a crosswalk and it goes right to the bridge.
Yeah, I think there, I think there's, like, all the spots.
Oh, all the spots are on the other side.
So, so Larry, at the meetings, when they talked about needing more, was there any sense of how many more were needed?
No, it, it was really just, you know, in a, in a general conversation where people were saying, well, how are we gonna get people to wanna come, or to come, when in the state the park is in now, we don't have any, how, what could we do that?
So it came up for several people with the same issue.
That's, yeah.
It's hard to quantify.
Those are two, but they wanna make it a lot longer, so there's no one could change.
Well, if we did the south side, like, the four spots there, made those two hour instead?
They are two hour, aren't they?
I don't know, the two or, I think they're up to six also, I'm not sure.
The ones by the house, by the.
Yeah, by, yeah, whatever it is.
The Riley.
Yeah, so those four, parallel spots, yeah.
Can I make a suggestion, if we, we can go through this like spot by spot, or we can, like, say, this probably makes sense, but then wait until we get, what makes sense, and then see, oh, wait, we, we just lost, you know, fourteen, two hour spots, so we lost twelve, six hour spots, and then we can.
Except this particular case, this North Buckout case, I think is worth going through.
Yes, I think, yeah.
The other screens are gonna be.
Yeah, the other ones are much more, uh, uniform.
Becomes east side, west side, or whatever.
This is, this is one of the hardest.
We've got a number of competing issues.
Yeah.
That might be.
I, I agree that.
We've got Matheson, we've got post office, we've got. You might wanna look at, at just making the south ones additional two hours.
That, that I think is a good idea.
That's four. That's four, I think, so that'd be more, so that'd be ten total, yeah, that, that sounds pretty good.
That's not.
And then it might also be good for, even for the post office, where they'll turn over quicker, so people could park in there also. If they're not two hour.
Are they, are they not two hour? And then the north side would all be six hour?
Well, except for the six that are currently, uh, Matheson hours.
There's the post office, this is the corner.
Wait, so you're taking most of the six hours off Buckout?
No, no, only, only the four spots.
As opposed to these spaces over here.
Only the four spots that are.
I, I'll write it, I know what it is, it's fine.
If you come, when you come around the post office.
Okay.
What is it?
There's just those there.
Right, there is.
These would stay six.
I know, I know.
Except for the, except for the ones that are in the east.
Okay, okay.
And I think we should, those, too, is we should.
Well, sure.
We don't care.
That went out, I went out, the sign says.
Three for Matheson, two hour.
So, so, the current thinking is leave the first six spaces closest to Matheson Parks, two hours.
Yep.
Everything else on that side of the street remains six.
And then the four across.
On the, on the south side of Bridge Street.
Yep.
Which are up, you know, closer to the post office, those would be two.
Because I think that also helps with the.
Isn't there also Best Buck parking in the corner?
In the very corner, yeah.
Okay, okay. So you now, you now you have four two hour spots there for the park that weren't there before. But you've lost some two hours down by the.
By the train station.
By the train.
Yeah.
So.
Right, totally right, so the train, we're putting the six hours by the train where they better should be, and we're leaving the two.
As they're two hours closer to the house.
Okay, so, okay, somebody say that to me again, so I can write, so I can write it down.
Well, this is gonna stay the same.
The north side.
North side of Bridge Street.
From its intersection with North Astor to a point that extends eighty-five in an eastward direction, that's gonna be two hour.
So then, and then, and then you're gonna add to this the south side, actually, the south side of Bridge Street.
Yes, because those are the only ones on the south side of Bridge Street.
Oh, so south.
South side of Bridge Street, and we, we should be clear, because we also call the other side of Bridge Street as well. So why don't we say the south side of Bridge Street between North Astor? Same, same description here.
Shouldn't that be east, right?
North, yes.
And North Buck.
East Bridge Street between North Astor and.
Yeah.
Easternly part of the north.
And then you want to back out, yes.
So there's no six hour there?
Yes.
No, there is, because this.
Eighty-five.
No one even began to talk about the bridge cutting down.
So the south side, okay, so then.
Yeah, that, that.
The north side of Bridge Street.
Did you watch it?
I didn't watch it, but I, I heard it, my windows.
Eighty-five feet east of North Astor.
Really loud.
It was quite, much more of a, uh.
East.
Pressure bomb, or whatever.
I was on Buckout, I didn't know it.
Yes, that's correct.
You were at the park, you felt it.
The, um, I didn't feel it, the city, that was the meeting square.
Oh.
They said they, you know, they certainly fell in Terry Down, and somebody, somebody inland said, I don't know, White Plains or Newcastle or something, said, what is this, what it says, we can feel it.
I said, I said, I texted, I said, you just saw the bridge come down.
You had a bad job, it's just. So tell me the, okay, continent street, north continent, so we're gonna say two hours on the west, six hours on the east?
I mean, I'm, I'm assuming there is even, you're close to even numbers of.
Yeah, I mean, you have some driveways here and there, but, yeah, it's, it's.
Same thing with south.
Wait, but, but north, but when we talked about north bucket, it's the, which side?
North Buckout was two hours on the west and six hours on the east.
All right, so that's opposite.
No, it, no.
No, it's exactly the same.
Oh.
Two hours on the west.
I think we should probably, probably try to do that.
I think we should keep it all.
Right, and we're driving, and we're driving our decision-making by the fact that the post office is there.
And the west side is gonna be generally two.
Two, correct.
Okay, on the side streets.
So that's continent, okay.
Except for home place.
Yeah, okay, Doucher, Ecker, Farren, well, wait, Doucher and Ecker.
Yep.
Are gonna be two hours on the west, six hours on the east. Now, what about Fair, what about Ferris, because you got, well, North Ferris. I mean, South Ferris is okay, right? What about, what about north, because you have all the.
Police parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, North Ferris is a really odd.
Very little six hour parking on that block.
So if you did keep the same system, and you said two hours on the, the.
West.
The west, there are actually spaces, whereas the east.
For North Ferris?
Police.
Except there's.
No, there's, yes, there's, there's less, but there's not.
There's a fair amount.
Yeah.
So you could still keep the same system, at least try.
There's at least six spots.
Yeah, because the, the employees don't have a, don't have a right to park on the street any longer than the hours.
Vehicles that.
And Jaffrey's unlimited.
And then, of course, the, okay.
What about, what about, what about east side of Grinnell Street, there's only one south.
Oh, Grinnell is so small.
When we leave it at whatever it is now?
I think it's all, it's, it's all two, right, yeah, I would leave it two.
Just leave that one the way it is.
Which one is?
Grinnell is the one, uh.
They are, it's only parking on which side?
Just up from the firehouse.
Um, Grinnell is the tiny one.
It's just up from the firehouse.
On the.
East side.
On the east side, yeah.
So that, but normally.
That should really be two hour.
They eat it.
It is already.
Okay, yeah, okay. But even though east is usually six.
East home.
It's okay, it's all right.
It's a different system on that street.
East, east home place.
Unchanged.
We have north side, east home place, and south side, west home.
I wouldn't change any of that.
I would leave whatever they are.
I wouldn't change any of that.
Okay.
No overnight parking.
West side of.
It's mostly residents that are parking there anyway, so, and they, and they have their own tanks.
And it's also parking. And Aqueducto should also be two hour.
I think so, you've got the Aqueduct parking.
Okay, what about?
Yeah, there's a little parking.
What about north and south Dearman?
Don't care.
No, that, uh...
So... Those are dear streets.
I always leave them where they are, wherever they are.
Two hour.
So...
Are they two hour?
It's all, it's two hours, yeah.
Well, north, uh, South Dearman has parking, roughly equal parking on both sides, north, north Dearman.
Is just those little...
There's only one side, and there's very little other.
I think we just leave the Dearmans alone.
That's pretty far down and...
Wherever they are.
Yeah, but you have businesses in there, so...
Which, oh, for that side, sorry. Can I see it again?
Greenfield?
Yeah.
I think you have to leave that at six.
I think whatever, I think whatever it is.
Can I get South Dearman?
I think whatever it is, whatever it is, I think it's legal, whatever it is.
On six.
That's what it is now, right?
Whatever it is, I think you leave it, we haven't heard any issues there.
Actually, no, it's listed as, it's listed as two.
The issue is to...
The list is two, but that's not draft.
Pressure off the bottom, so you've gotta come up far enough that you're taking the pressure off the bottom two streets. So, it looks like we're coming up as far as Ferris. It was...
But then the other ones, the state, there's, they're too small, like, if you say six...
There's no, there's no commuter parking going on, on Dearman. There are none.
No, I know.
Okay.
But so, but there is kind of a, a cut off, because you're cutting off Grinnell, and you're cutting off home, and you're cutting off...
They only have it on one side.
Right, I know, but it's not like you're assigning some more, you're, you're not assigning any six hour spots up there.
I think some of, yeah, Grinnell is two, but I think the other ones are six.
Are they?
I think they're all, I think they're all two.
I think they're two, and I, my concern is you're, you're still trying to keep the pressure...
But no one's going to park up there and...
Oh.
To, to commute for, to, for the short time. I, I, I almost guaranteed that...
For all the people that went down to the park on Tuesday, they parked all the way up anywhere, they parked it tomorrow.
You have so many businesses there.
How many bridges are there to blow up?
How many bridges are there, hopping again?
Yeah, and this is, blow up another bridge, so...
You have so many businesses there, I don't, I don't see why you wouldn't want short-term parking in that, that's a, that's a...
Well, you know, we'll put this schema out, and we'll see how it flies.
I don't think it has to be totally regular, I think that regularity is, what is it, the Hovgavon or something?
Six hour on Dearman.
It's six, okay.
We all, all have small minds.
Keep Dearman six.
Consistency is a Hovgavon or a small mind.
Yeah, north and south Dearman.
They are six, they're gonna keep them as six.
Dearman stays at six, but the other little streets in the...
Says everybody likes to park to commute.
Yeah.
You mean home?
You're on, you're, you're gonna get a nice...
I walk from Riverview every morning.
Okay, good.
Isn't the car, in the car, out of garage there?
No, it left.
No, but you have, Joe Clark's there.
Joe Clark's there, yeah, they're up at Sleepy Hollow.
So, so then, I think the only other issue is, and I think it's, it's resolved with Larry, what Larry says, we can just eliminate the whole employer parking program.
Which is hard, yeah, cause we're...
Just the other, all that's much better.
Right.
Okay, so, well, we...
Cause I had a lot of questions.
But are we charging for six hour spots or not? I didn't hear.
That was, that was an idea that was floated, so let's...
I think...
What about if we charge for six hour spots, like, that are not up, but down, like the ones on Main Street, Lower Main Street, and Astor, like, those kind of spots where they're so close to the train station that you might wanna be able to have an extra handle on monitoring them?
I think that's a...
But we're talking about having an Irvington-wide resident, like, you can get an Irvington permit?
Yeah, the same thing you have at the Astor, at the Arts League.
Cause I mean, originally you said, you know, there'd be like an Irvington permit where you, you wouldn't have to...
No, I think maybe we just make those spaces, you pay as you play, everyone pays. I'm, I'm not in favor of doing that right away.
Yeah, let's see how it works without that, that would be another level of control we could put in.
I think with six hour...
But we have enforcement now.
I changed things.
If we have actually...
Parking being the third rail, putting meters in, is... Yeah, I, I, I think it's always great that we don't have meters.
Why is it that every other freaking community in, around, we're saying, without a problem?
I know.
I think it's just a bunch of, of, you know, boohoo, I mean, there's, who is it that told us that, oh, I was talking at...
At?
Womah.
Yeah, right.
Uh, the mayor of White Plains was talking about how he was at recent urban planning...
Right.
Lectures about, uh, talks, um, and suddenly intended, they were all pointing out that in fact metering does not damage business.
No, I, and I, I read that book from...
White Plains meters are...
Pre-parking is not free, I mean, you, you control...
I don't know why planes to park on the street, cause they got them doing...
You can help control on what you charge.
Right, I'll park in the garages, but they have meters in their little, you know, sort of street parking lots. You can't see them, you can't read them, you can't understand what...
The bad, the bad ones are bad.
Is Harrytown, that, you know, down the hill, down Main? I don't like physical meters, but I like the, the, where you have a number at the, at the parking spot, and there's a little blue station on the block, in the middle of the block, and you walk to it, and you know your, your...
Your number.
Your number, and you put your money in, and then you shut up and leave.
Or you do it on your phone.
Like you're Arthur Rappin' him, you go to the thing, you get tickets, ticketing, you window.
Yeah, well, here's...
Box is very easy.
Here's the, it sounds to me like we're not gonna solve the debate necessarily, but, but I, here's the, the reason that when it was suggested that there was some appeal to it, and the appeal is this, if you're, you're spending a pretty good amount of time and a lot of real estate on the bottom part of Main Street, to dedicate parking, I won't say dedicate, but to set aside some parking to accommodate day trippers, you know, commuters, but short-term commuters. Why are they the only ones not paying for parking? Anyone going to the city should expect to have to pay for parking.
Well, that's my point, yes.
And so, that's, that's where the suggestion came from, and to the extent that that, um, provides for, uh, more strict enforcement, funds to provide for more strict enforcement, and in, ensures better turnover of those spaces, because they still are six, they are gonna turn. So, to the extent that that helps.
Maybe they turn out.
So, that's where the thinking was coming from, now, that, that's a philosophical debate, we've gotta, we've gotta...
Residents of Buckout are gonna have to pay to park?
No.
No, because they have a resident.
Cause they'll have their resident tag.
And can override it.
So, this will be Irvington resident, so if Brian wants to...
No, no.
No, 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 no.